Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Somersville City Council, this third day of August 2020. At this time, I would like to welcome everybody and then go to the agenda. The first item on tonight's agenda would be consideration of the council minutes of the meeting held July 27th of 2020.
Move to approval and wait for reading.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Counsel, are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. So Counsel, there is a reason for tonight's special meeting, and there were two things that I wanted to make sure that we had on the agenda. Actually, the U.S. Department of Justice COPS grant that we applied for and received. Initially, when the city applied for it and received it, we thought we could use it for an uncertified officer that we had in the hamper. Indeed, we cannot. And incidentally, this grant has to be accepted and back to the federal government by August, I want to say August 8th. But anyway, so it would have been just fell short just of our next meeting, so we needed to have a special meeting, and I'll discuss this when we actually get to the agenda item. And then also, I wanted to make sure that there was clarity and no confusion and being very transparent with the actions that we're going to take on the other agenda item. In lieu of that, what we decided to do is go ahead and move the other agenda items that would have been in the August 10th meeting to tonight's special meeting, which they're on the agenda, and therefore, we will not have then a regular scheduled council meeting on August 10th. With that said, the mayor has signed up for public comment because we didn't get mayor's report on the special agenda, and that is my fault. I didn't tell anyone to do it. So I'm going to speak under public comment on it because I got a couple of things that I want to pass on to you, Counsel. And the first would be make note that the city of Somersville Water System fall flushing of our system will begin August 24th and run three consecutive weeks ending on and about September 11th, which is a Friday. So we'll be flushing our system, the water department will. So it's important that I got that out because, of course, our next scheduled meeting would be when we were already underway with our flushing. The other thing, Counsel, I will pass down to you. We received in the mail, it was addressed to town council, a citizen complaint, and the citizen complaint is along with many other complaints that we received relative to a property located on Main Street, and I will tell you that we are working diligently for improvement. So I'll pass this down so you all can read the information correspondence that we received in the mail. With that said, was there anybody else that signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, we need approval, acceptance of the Department of Justice COPS grant for $125,000. Counsel, we sent you the key two pages in this COPS grant that we were awarded for $125,000. As I stated just a minute ago, our initial, when we applied for this, we initially thought that we'd be able to use this for an officer that we already have actually pending or waiting to go to the academy, which incidentally has been rescheduled a couple of times. Indeed, we got clarification after we received the grant and read the details and also called for confirmation, we are not allowed to use it for somebody that's already on the payroll. So what I'm asking you tonight, Counsel, is to approve this $125,000 federal funding that's a three-year award for cop hiring, and currently, the city of Somersville has 15 officers. I'm asking you to approve going to 16 officers, and we will hire an additional officer. You can see that our commitment for the three-year period for matching will be $83,200.
Move to approval.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
Second, now discussion, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Counsel, just so you know, this acceptance requires both mine and the chief's signatures, so we'll do so and send back to the Department of Justice. I think this is a good thing. Also, incidentally, we also did clarify in the event we get down the road and we would have attrition, we are required by this grant to maintain this officer for a period of three years. So indeed, if we got down the road and decided that, you know, if we lost an officer under attrition, we decided that the number that we wanted to budget was 15, we can change it back at a later date. We just have to maintain this officer in this program for a period of three years. The next thing on the agenda would be approval, and Counsel, I'm really not asking for your approval, I'm asking for your endorsement to go ahead and borrow money against One Old Wilderness Road, which is the Brown Oaks property, because as I'd like to inform you, the Arbuckle property that we purchased and we were preparing to borrow $555,000 on, we were pretty much set for closing last week when we got our quote back, first of all, by the loan amount we're required to carry 268,000 plus in flood insurance. It's all regulated by federal government when you borrow money on or in a flood plain. Part of that property is in Flood Zone A. Incidentally, when we went to get the quote for the 200 and some thousand dollars, the quote came back at $14,658 a year. So immediately, the bank, you know, actually, what I first did was ask the bank that if the city would put funds on deposit, 260 some thousand, and secure them for the flood insurance, then the flood, the whole federal program, banking program says, no, you can't do that. You have to purchase the flood insurance. So in essence, we would borrow the $555,000, which we secured the loan, for 1.99%. Incidentally, that's kind of one of the reasons for the property and property improvements, we went ahead and borrowed the money because we're getting it at just right under 2%. It makes sense to go ahead, and the bank today was on property, Brown Oaks, which is One Wilderness Road, doing what they need to do and still facilitating the very near future of closing. All we're doing is we're still going to borrow the money to improve the newly acquired property on Arbuckle Road, but we're going to do it on a property that will not require the flood insurance. So it's, you know, in essence, it's going to save us $146,580, which I don't think I would have recommended we borrow the money if we were going to have to buy the flood insurance. So what I need is I just want your endorsement that you're okay with us doing this because both properties already sit in the building commission, so technically, with us asking to borrow money, the building commission can do that. It's within their authority by statute, but I just wanted city council's endorsement. So therefore, I would ask for a motion.
Move to approval.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, the next two items were going to be agenda items, actually, the only agenda items that were going to be on the August 10th meeting that now we're going to cancel. And so what I would like to do is, Counsel, these are for mere discussions with city council. It's your opportunity, you've been supplied the information on the ordinances. What I will state is that they have been thoroughly vetted through the planning and zoning. Incidentally, the planning and zoning held public hearings on both ordinances, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And of course, it's slated right now for both of these ordinances, if council sees fit, to come before us with a public hearing and passage on the August 24th regular scheduled council meeting, which will be our next meeting. So with that said, I'd like to turn the floor over to Gary, were you going to give a little overview or?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words.
Okay, let Gary say a few words. The other thing I would like to do, Counsel, is members, we have Councilman Jim Epling, Councilman Brandon Waters, and tonight with us, along with that, we also have the Planning and Zoning Chairman Craig Chapman. So I would invite a conversation with Counsel, but Craig, the door is certainly open. If you're asked a question or have something that you want to say, being a part of this like you are, I would invite you in the conversation. So with that said, Gary?
You're our guest. I'd like to begin before we get into discussions and just say a few words. I'd like to begin by first thanking the Planning and Zoning Commission, both past and present. I know that prior to my election and appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, many hours were spent on revising our current ordinances. Some may say that when they failed to pass through the council, it was a failure. On the other hand, I would totally disagree. I feel that the topic that was being discussed was spot on. Yes, change is difficult, but this topic in regard to revisiting ordinances, some that have been in place since the 60s, need addressed. When I look around and I see the empty buildings and the loss of the coal industry in our area, I realize that we must look for new opportunities while in doing so, protecting our residential areas. That is exactly what planning and zoning is doing. Planning and zoning is trying to develop opportunities in business with these current revisions, opportunities that under our current ordinances may not be possible. I want you to know, many hours of discussion have been given to this. I know on a personal level, I have worn out citizens with questions, and I have been given terrific advice, terrific support. I know at the end of the day, we may not be able to make everybody happy. It's a very difficult thing for me. I have a real people pleasing type of personality. I try to please by nature, and I'm always looking for win-wins, and I've quickly found out just in the quick first year of my office, that's not always possible. But we do work, you know, really hard and look for the areas to help what works best for the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission feels that what is in front of you this evening is a great start. These current changes will quickly make us more popular with new business opportunities. Business today is evolving, and we must evolve with it in order to attract it. I'll end on this little quote Bobby Unser once said, "Success is where preparation and opportunity meet. Opportunity is around the corner for us, right here in front of us. We must get prepared." And that's what planning and zoning has worked on here. I know there's been a great deal of hours, you know, put into this, but I do want to just start by just giving you a little, I guess, a 300-foot level here, a 3,000-foot level, as to where we are and what we were working on. In front of you, you'll see the C1, C2, C3 ordinances in the central business districts. Those are the areas we concentrated in on, and we took a look at those. Along with, and I think on the agenda there, the first item is actually a dog kennel, so I'll go straight to the dog kennel.
Do the dog kennel first.
And I'll stay online, I'll stay online with your agenda, Mary.
Okay.
The dog kennel was something that we feel is very, very important. It's an important business. With the use of pets today, more and more people have pets, and if you are a walker and you walk around the area, you'll know that. There are pets everywhere. And we know that these businesses in town that are kennels are very important to our area. I have a lot of neighbors that use them, I use them when vacations are in place and things of that nature. So we took a look at a kennel that was, that is currently in business, and we sort of modeled ourselves around that kennel. I mean, that kennel is doing a lot of good things, and we have no complaints from that kennel. We had a lot of folks from this council and from planning and zoning that has used that kennel. So we used that, you know, that experience when we tried to sit down and model kennels. It's a real difficult thing, but I want everyone to know first and foremost, when we talk kennels, we're talking commercial zoning areas tonight. We haven't really got into the residential areas yet. That is coming, and I see that in our near future. Wouldn't you say, Craig, residential areas is probably up next? So this is, we're talking about commercial districts right now, the C1, C2, C3. So if you look over at the kennels, and I won't go line for line with this because, you know, guys, what you're seeing, even though I've only been involved with it for less than a year, they've been working on this. Some of these folks have been, you know, two years working on this, three years working on this. So it's very, very difficult to get through this. When we would sit and meet, just maybe a couple of us at a time, and we would start at a 505.12, we may only get to D and we'd be two hours in. So a lot of discussion's been done, but, you know, we're looking, if you have any comments, questions, suggestions, we're certainly open to any of those. Does everybody have one in front of them? Does everybody have a dog kennel in front of them? So does anybody have any questions on the 505.12 dog kennels?
If somebody has a litter of pups and things like that, that is a, say they got eight pups, I mean, what they do have to, is that a kennel?
Yeah, you're talking about, are you talking about like in a residential area?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
But that's in the city, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little different, but just to help you out on that, there are ordinances in the residential areas.
This is a residential ordinance too, isn't it? This is a city ordinance. I mean, I think this applies to everything down there.
This is just within the city of Somersville.
Yeah, but that isn't what it says. I mean, if you read this ordinance, it talks-
This is a dog kennel ordinance for the-
For the whole city?
Yes.
So it's not just commercial?
But it's only permitted in certain areas.
Where does it say that? We're not reviewing that.
It talks about residents.
Well, I don't have that on my, what I'm reviewing.
I'm talking about the C1, C2, and C3 that we have. It's permitted in the C1, C2, and C3. And then because it's permitted in there, we worked on the dog kennel ordinance in order to make it-
Why would it not be listed here also if that's what we're working on?
Be listed where?
Why would it not be listed here that this is not residential? It is.
Because this is just a dog kennel ordinance. This is what the permitted uses are in the areas.
But let me get some clarification here, because when you read this ordinance, this ordinance indicates that it's both for residential and commercial.
It says, Captain, any single address within the corporate city limits of Somersville.
Yeah, and then it also goes on to say that, you know, let's see, such kennel and exercise area shall be separate from any human residence on the premises. So all dogs exercise on a regular basis such as kennels and exercise area shall be separate from any human residence on the premises. So I was going to ask you all what that meant, because what that sounds to me like is that if you have a house that's got an attached garage, the kennel can't be in that house and attached garage, but it could be on a separate, you know, it says it's got to be separate from a human residence. So I don't understand why it's talking about residents if this isn't a, if this doesn't apply to the residential area.
But what I'm saying is dog kennels would still have to be permitted in a residential area, whatever our-
By this ordinance?
No, by whatever ordinances we have on residential areas, just like we have commercial ordinances for C1, C2, and C3. Well, we would have residential ordinances as well. Dog kennels would have to be permitted in that residential area, and to my knowledge, kennels would, I mean, I think we even have stipulations for one-
So is there a residence, is there a separate kennel ordinance for residents right now?
We have residential ordinances.
But is there a kennel residential ordinance?
No, this is, this is just the kennel ordinance.
So you're saying this doesn't apply to residential?
I'm saying residential, it would have to be permitted.
I understand that, but does this ordinance apply to residential?
It would if it was permitted. This is the dog kennel ordinance, so if it was permitted in a residential area, then yes, it would apply. But to my knowledge, it's not permitted in a residential area.
Oh, so there's some other ordinance that we have that says it can't be in residential?
It's in the residential ordinance.
And the residential ordinance doesn't say we can only have four dogs, or is it four?
Yeah, it's four, four is a max.
In a residential area.
Four dogs, a max, yes.
But it's also what the mayor's saying, that you're alluding to the fact that there's going to be a personal residence on the property, and that means somebody's house, if I understand that, and you're talking about a commercial area, shopping centers and alike that usually have a house, so how you going to separate that?
I just misunderstood, guys. I thought this ordinance was both for residential and commercial.
This ordinance right here does not permit dog kennels. This ordinance is what they have to follow if dog kennels are permitted.
Okay.
Right now, as far as I know, I looked over at part one, two, and three, and there's no mention of any dog kennels permitted.
Now, these ordinances, the C1, C2, and C3, they permit dog kennels, but that just means they have to follow these stipulations that the kennel ordinance lays out. This doesn't-
No, I just don't think this has anything to do with that. This is commercial, C1, C2, C3. Got nothing to do.
Okay, going regulations, number one, when it talks about the city of Somersville, the operation, are there any county or state regulations that would also apply to a count given the fact that it's raising animals and they need health concerns and vaccinations? Are there state and county regulations on a count? Because if there are, they should be listed.
I would have to ask our veterinary office would be able to answer that.
I mean, there may very well be, but whenever we wrote the dog kennel ordinance, we made changes, I looked under the state code and could not find any actual dog kennel ordinance under the state code.
Okay. You looked to see if there's any licensing requirements from the state or the county?
I looked to see if there were any, like a dog kennel ordinance under the state, and I didn't see one.
I can't answer that. Like, I'd have to, I'll have to find that out for you. The veterinary office is great to work with, and they have, they know there's any-
So, you know, I dug into this today because I had several calls from actually people that are sitting here tonight. So let me ask this for clarification. So that human residence would be like if, I guess, we have maybe an apartment in C1, C2, or C3, or somebody living in a building that's in commercial, when it refers to human residence. And then the other question that I would like to ask you all, basically, it says, "All kennel or kennel-like operations shall be kept and maintained inside of a building." The kennels that we have right now, that we've permitted, both of them have an outdoor run that they exercise the dogs in. According to this ordinance, going forward, you all are not going to allow that because all operation has to be in a building. Do I understand that correct? So you can't have an outdoor run to exercise the dogs?
Yes.
You can?
The outdoor exercise.
Okay, but this doesn't say that. It says, "All operations have to be maintained inside of a building."
Which, where does it say that?
Right here, number A.
A, two A. Back to regulation number one, on the last sentence, the permit shall be renewable provided such operations in compliance with all rules and regulations. I understand what that says, but it needs some more language to say that if they have any assessments against them or unpaid fines that are being debated, they will not be relicensed?
I mean, I would have no problem with that. I mean-
I think you know where I'm coming from on that. Somebody could have a bunch of fines against us like the other and argue that that's not what the regulation says, that, you know, they're in compliance and it's debatable. So if you want to button up tight, if they have any assessments against unpaid or taken care of, they shouldn't be remitted.
Yeah, well, we definitely want to-
Has with all of our people.
Well, we definitely want to button up tight. The one thing we've said all along is we've got to be able to enforce better than we have in the past, and what we're writing is only going to help our code official while he's out in the field trying to enforce.
Correct.
So we need it to be tight.
That's where the term, the letter of the law comes in, and you really need it if you're enforcing. Now, on C, all dogs shall be kept in a secure pen or enclosure of suitable size for a number of dogs. I don't like suitable at all. I think that should say regulation because everybody's suitable could be a whole bunch different. Basically writing the law on the land here for Somersville. What's suitable for somebody might not be suitable to somebody else.
But on down in that exact same thing, it says 60 square feet.
Per dog, dog. Why doesn't it say that up there?
It's in the same paragraph, is this a-
Sure, both numbers two.
So do you think we could add something that would permit the outdoor exercise run?
Yeah, I mean, they have to be exercised.
Yeah, well, I mean, it could be indoors. I just didn't know if you're all-
I understand your point.
Yeah, and then the only other thing that I have that I would like you all to consider is on I, I don't like that at all, where it says, "The city of Somersville by any authorized agent, servant, or employee shall have the right to investigate or inspect any kennel or kennel-like operation." I would like that to say, "The city of Somersville's code official or employee," and I don't know if the word should be designated or directed by the mayor, and the reason I say that is, it should say code official, but in the absence of the code official and a violation, you better have it in the ordinance that the mayor has the authority to direct somebody else to go do an inspection, but I think that that should be the code official or employee either designated or directed by the mayor to go do the inspection.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
That's okay.
Because I, it just, you know, it's, you know, I really think that this is, you know, the code official's responsibility, and then, you know, in the event that he is on vacation and there's a, you know, violation or complaint, I don't think it should not happen because he's not here, so if we could just change that language.
On number two there, and this B, tell me what that means. Any person, I mean, that's not a, that has four or more dogs?
Must be considered a kennel.
I mean, to keep it, somebody kind of brings them in to keep them for you for a vacation or something like that, is that, say if they bring their dogs to them, but any person?
If they do that on a regular basis, I'd say yes.
If you keep four dogs or somebody else on vacation, you're-
Well, with yours, say if you've got two dogs and then somebody brings you two dogs, or you've had some pups and what do you?
Well, if there are pups.
Then what?
Let's say-
Well, it's in here somewhere, I read, it says-
Six months old.
Six months. There you go.
Which is really a good thing, because if somebody has a litter of pups and they keep them past six months, you got-
They're in. Two months of probably.
Yeah.
But that's, that's for-
My daughter has three dogs.
Yeah.
I've got one.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Did we answer your question, Gene?
I think Craig did, basically stating that if you do it like all the time, then that would be considered probably a kennel, but if you're like watching your- that would be considered probably a kennel, but if you're like watching your kids' dogs for a week or two on their own vacation, that shouldn't be an issue, right?
Right.
Well, that's just, but it says any person, but if you're saying it's just a dog kennel, then you're gonna make it a dog kennel, right?
Yeah, you have to have that in there. I mean, people would certainly take advantage of that if you didn't have it in there. I mean, people would get six dogs and say, "Well, I'm watching them for my friends," you know, and then you would have an issue, so.
Gary, on J, on the second page, where they have to have an application to increase their head count.
Yes.
Is there, is the 25 head count still applicable there, and is the fee already established?
That, that has been the fee. I believe that was already established, was it?
Okay.
That was already established.
This was already in-
Didn't increase it.
Yeah, this was the ordinance, it's actually, if you look now, this is the dog kennel ordinance that's on, with just very few changes.
Yes, yeah. But we didn't increase any of those, those numbers.
Actually, we put number N, there wasn't a limit to 25, we put that in.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't something that we didn't already have in our ordinances. I mean, this dog kennel ordinance, we, we've had it, all we did was go in and make some changes on some things like that it has to be indoors, there's only 70 dogs, and we already had this, this isn't anything new really.
Yeah, I just misunderstood, I thought this was for both residential and-
But if this is the ordinance for kennels, and it comes before planning and zoning, that someone wants to put a kennel in a residential area and let's say, you approve it, or it gets approved, they'll follow these guidelines, right?
It would be the BZA.
Yes, yeah, we would not approve that, but it would go to the BZA.
If for some reason it?
Yeah.
So in a sense, this is an ordinance for both, like the mayor said, for both.
Yeah, it could be, if it's permitted.
If it were permitted in-
Commercial and residential. So do you think that's what that means when it says, "Exercise on regular basis such kennels and exercise areas shall be separate from any, any human residence?" So what that would mean to me, that if there was one permitted in a residential area, it would have to be in a separate building, not the residence. Like, which I would even count their garage, could be a kennel in their garage, it would have to be a separate building.
I would have it in a commercial zone. My residence is in a commercial zone.
Well, that makes sense, yeah.
Gary, on E, I'm on the second page, is there any other language you want to add to that, basically relieving the city of any liability if you dispose of an animal? And of course, I could cite dozens of examples, people we put on here. If you transfer their dog and give it to another owner, they're gonna come back and say, "It was a superbred Australian dog, it cost $5,000," and try to, try to do that, so you're gonna mess with that.
Good point, legally, I mean, yeah, it could get you in a bind. It could get you in a bind.
I think there-
I could ask Greg to re-
If Greg could get you some kind of release in there. It's just, that's my thoughts on it.
That's him, correct?
Him?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you all have a, you all have a scheduled meeting in August before the 24th? Plan on having one?
We don't have a scheduled one.
Looks like we're gonna have one soon.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, if, if, because, you know, you could still, you know, where this ordinance doesn't require you all to have a public hearing, you could reset those few things. For example, if you do wanna allow for an outdoor run for exercise, and then if you could on I change the wording to be more specific to, you know, code official.
I got that line.
Yeah, and then, and then also if you're gonna run by, but you know, you could do this and still have it ready for the 24th meeting for approval.
And I, I think also on D, I think that should be worded inside or outside area, but it should be limited to, I mean, you don't wanna let 25 dogs outside exercise at the same time. I think it needs to be limited to one or two at a time.
Yeah. Okay, anybody, anybody else have any other questions for the dog kennel or comments?
Mike, if you have some things you want to go over with me on that for a board.
Okay, you wanna bounce to the-
Yeah, let's bounce.
Bounce, let's bounce to the next agenda, I, which is-
It's the C1, C2, and C3. Basically on this, there was a sense of, I don't wanna say loosening, maybe a little bit of a bad word, I don't know, but, but we, we did look at it for loosening up, trying to get some of these, these empty buildings filled by allowing some light manufacturing inside of a building. And we feel that will help benefit some of those, those areas. So you'll see a lot of that in there. The other thing that we took a lot of time is, we took a lot of time in correcting definitions. The last time that, that this came before you, there was a lot of definition issues, and we really took the time and went by the International Zoning Code and corrected a lot of those definitions. So we are following the International Zoning Code, which is where we should be. They also flow a little better, I think there was a lot of time spent on that. The definitions with the, our- Do you have anything else on that, Brandon, you wanna add to that? Jim?
You wanna talk about the C1, C2, and C3, what we're trying to do there?
With the combining, yeah, we, in the beginning, we really felt that we could combine and go from C, from three zones to two, and we, we even had went as far as having a map already constructed and done, but there were some rules in there that indicated that to do so, there was a lot of information that had to be put out, and it was pretty quite expensive to do that. We elected to just stay with the C1, C2, C3. One and two is pretty much identical. I don't know of anything that's really different to you. I mean, it's, it's pretty identical, C1, C2 are pretty much identical.
And C3 is also-
Yeah.
Except for signage. Except for signage. So basically, same types of businesses are being permitted in all three areas, all three zones.
The differences in the highway zone, you say the signage?
Yes. There may be some, I mean, there's not a lot of setback. There's, there's one in there, I believe it's about 250 feet, there's a, from a restaurant and a dog kennel, I mean, that's a dog kennel room, so that's, that's a dog kennel room, so I'll back up there on that.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions about permitted uses or prohibited uses? We wrestle this thing pretty hard. Trying to come up with-
It was wrong.
Some of you have been wrestling it for 24 months.
Yeah.
Or longer.
Longer, yeah.
One thing, was it just left out that the prohibited uses?
Yes.
It's supposed to be in all three.
Yes, yeah, and I've talked to Amy, she's gonna crack that.
I was gonna say, I thought the same prohibited uses were in all three.
So what you have in C3 should have prohibited uses in there, mirroring C2.
The same as C1 and C2.
Crack a little, look at that and make sure it's exactly the same. Is that not in there? I don't know. Is it here in? In C2, it wasn't in C3. Go to C3, does yours have it?
Yeah, uses is prohibited in C3. That's C1.
That was C1?
Yeah.
Sorry, you're right. Good, let's start C.
There's three pages!
You gotta get a copy?
So you were keeping Amy from going over.
You have a good job.
I was trying to help you, sorry. I'm gonna just also bear in mind, everybody's sort of still looking, I, I think it's important to really look at some of the concerns and issues that this council was met with the last time. A lot of, there were a lot of issues with notification on the meeting, number of days that it was to be, that it was supposed to be posted, there was a 15-day timeframe, and there was some, there was some confusion there. There were some folks that wanted to just delay it to get more public input. I think it's really important to know that we worked hard on this for quite a while, and we announced those, those meetings properly, and they were all announced for, for folks to come in, and we had some folks that came in and shared and gave some good input, and we appreciated that, but they were asking for some more. There were some setbacks, main issue of concern, there were some setback issues in there. There was a lot of appropriate governing bodies, things of that nature. I want everybody to know that I think we've made great strides in that area in regard to, we're, we're, we'll be taking a BZA, which was not as involved, and will be a lot more involved now in a lot of areas. We've, with the mayor's help, we've really boosted that, that group up, and they've got a really good group, willing to get started and get meeting on a regular basis. We have already had some issues, I have one that I'll, I'll act on tomorrow, where I will be not allowing a particular business, this business I know will then, once I turn it down, will deny them, they will take that to the BZA, which is the proper avenue, and they may have an opportunity to do it, so I'm really pleased with that, I think that's, that's gonna work out really well. Manufacturing seemed to be a lot of questions on the C1, C2, C3. I'm very, very confident with what we've said and put in place, that we can move a lot of that into inside buildings and have success. So we've got a lot of that. There was some vague language, was a lot of concerns that night, and we have secured that by really getting in to the, the International Zoning Code and correcting a lot of that, so a lot of that was, that was, that was corrected. Yes, yes, so we corrected those definitions. So, and I mean, when you go down and you look at the comments that night, I mean, we've really addressed a lot of those concerns, and feel pretty good about that. Can't, we're not gonna get it perfect, Brandon and I were talking about that today, I mean, you know, we're not gonna get it perfect. It's gonna need to be amended at times and addressed at times, just like tonight, we found a couple of little things in our kennel. Any other questions on any of that?
I'd like to say that we really try to keep this thing as business-friendly as possible, but still protect the interests of residential. So that was a, you know, a primary concern, be business-friendly, but again, protect the residential districts again.
Okay, anybody got any other questions?
Nope.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's actually kind of exciting to know that we finally have turned it corner. So council, you could anticipate that for sure, the C1, C2, and C3 public hearing will be probably set up for 6:30 on August 24th. And I wanna echo what Gary said, as I have not attended all of the meetings, but I did attend quite a few of the meetings, and I know that even the meetings, the public meetings, there was a lot of other meetings that were held, members with members, and there's been a lot of time, effort, and energy to get us where we're at, and it's very appreciated. And so, you know, I can't thank enough for those that have been involved in the process, past and present, as Gary noted, because even recently, there's been some members rotate off that had a great deal to do with, you know, with helping the planning and zoning in this product, and they have labored it, so I, I think what Jim says is worth repeating, you know, in their meetings, if you were there and listening, you know, it's about preserving the sanctity of our community and our neighborhoods, but also, you know, hanging out a shingle that says that we're a city open for business, and that's a good thing. So, thank you, Craig, you know, and you're, and if you would please take that back to the planning and zoning, that it's much appreciated of the governing body of the city, which is myself and city council, we appreciate it, and I wanna especially thank those two that are on this body and have paid double duty, you know, not only with planning and zoning, but back here at city council, so thank all of you for what you've done. Okay, so that's exciting, we can expect to have that on, on our next city council agenda. With that said, I just wanna make a note again that due to this meeting tonight and the necessity of it, that there will not be a regular scheduled city council business meeting August 10th, so with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. The first and the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thank you, council, have a good evening.